Can everybody hear me?
Can you guys hear me?
I'm gonna...
I'll fix that in just a sec. Okay, try again.
How's that? Is that better?
A little bit.
A smidge.
Okay, alright. I'll turn mine up over here and hopefully it helps. Okay, we're ready to go.
Move on?
Yep.
Calling this meeting to order, this is a meeting of the mayor and council of the city of Bisbee, county of Cochise, state of Arizona, being held on Tuesday, September 7th at 7:00 PM at the council chambers located in Bisbee, Arizona. Roll call please.
Councilmember Louis Pollak?
Here.
Councilmember Joni Giacamino?
Here.
Councilmember Frank Davis?
Here.
Mayor Ken Budge?
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns?
Here.
Councilmember Mel Sued?
Here.
Mayor Protem Anna Klein?
Here.
City staff, Steven Pocken, city manager, Ashley Coronado, city clerk, Carrie Bagley, finance director, Joelle Landers, personnel director, Jesus Haro, public works director, Alberti Chave, police chief, Jim Richardson, acting fire chief, Joe Estes, city attorney.
Thank you. So tonight, for a moment of silence, two things have hit me. One is, of course, the devastation that Hurricane Nida caused that east, which really required a lot of first responders, and of course, when I think of first responders, I think of the 20th anniversary of 9/11. So, we take a minute and just thank our first responders, and then also for the people that have been affected by the hurricane flooding, losing their roofs and everything else we're saying. Take a minute, please. Alright, pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, for announcements tonight, I just want to let you know I'm gonna be pulling item number three off the agenda. After we get some more information, I'll show up on the August, I'm sorry, October meeting. Alright, also just as an announcement, quite a few of us, your council members, went to the League of Cities and Towns in Phoenix this last week. We had some really good classes. I think we learned a few things and hopefully we can sort of find those to help us out here in business. So, if you have questions, please get ahold of your council members and or myself. Alright, for call to the public, we have one, Mr. Fred Miller. Call your friend.
Oh, sorry.
Oh.
Sorry.
Boy, Fred.
Sorry, Fred.
Of course I can. Thanks, my name's Fred Miller and I live at 39 Hazard Street. And I just wanted to make you aware, if you haven't been, the Bisbee Saturday Market is opening this Saturday. We're delighted to be in Vista Park and offer residents a community-oriented food and craft market. And I'd like to invite the council and mayor to a ribbon cutting ceremony, and the city manager also, to a ribbon cutting ceremony at about 9 o'clock on the southeast entrance to Vista Park. It's right where they're putting the new sidewalk in. And hopefully that'll be poured tomorrow. You've made it possible for us to open, we'd like to thank you for the opportunity. And I'll send you in an email invite also, too. On the same day, we're sponsoring a 9/11 20th anniversary commemoration service, I guess you'd call it. And yourselves, as well as the public at large, is welcome to come. It's gonna begin at 8:30 at the north side of the Rose Garden in Vista Park. It's gonna be a short observation with a few words from the police chief, Chavi, firefighter Klein, and Mayor Budge. And we'll have a moment of silence at 8:56. It's gonna be pretty informal, we're gonna have a pickup truck for the speakers to speak from. We'll have a portable microphone. We hope that our community will help us acknowledge the first responders whose commitment in our community and throughout the United States, their commitment to public safety is unparalleled. So, we just hope you'll show up and shop and see your neighbors. Let's go. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Alright, moving on, we'll get to accounts payable. Do we have a motion?
I move to adjourn the accounts payable to the amount of $428,488.16.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve accounts payable subject to funds. Do we have anybody that wants questions? I have a really quick one. I notice that we're still buying a lot of fuel. Are we getting closer to racking up on fuel system?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we do finally have all the equipment. What we are now trying to do is get a contractor to install it. We do have a proposal from a contractor that was recommended by the manufacturer of the fuel station. We do need to get some additional proposals from contractors, so that's where we're at.
Alright, no? I just stayed up there and answered one of the check. Any other questions? Alright, call for table, please.
Councilmember Pollak?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sued?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. So move. Alright, moving on to the consent agenda. I have one quick update on that one. This will be a 2A. Just a typo in there. This is a resignation, as you can see in your packet of Shaw and Young, not from the Evergreen Cemetery, but from the DRB. And so I just want to make that correction. And then we have three other consent agenda items. They're all park approval uses with a couple of labors or fees. One for the high school, one for Bratz, you have to touch the two for Bratz. So, any questions from anybody? Entertained a motion to approve the count. The consent agenda has shown.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion, my friend, a second, by Anna to approve the consent agenda as shown. Roll, please.
Councilmember Pollak?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sued?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. So move consent agenda. We, moving on to, we have no old business, moving on to new business. I pulled item number three, so we'll move right into item number four. This is a discussion of possible approval to allow the town mine store manager to purchase batteries used in the locomotives.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're looking at purchasing two batteries for our locomotives. Went out to bid, actually hoping to get a few more, but Battery Giant and Arnold machinery, the two people that put in bids, and Battery Giant came in with the best price. And I'd bought them batteries from them before, both from Arnold and Battery Giant, who've had better success on the Battery Giant batteries. They come in at $5,272.50 for a pair of batteries.
This takes care of one locomotive?
One locomotive, yeah.
Questions?
I'm just curious, how long do those things last?
We're replacing ones that are about seven years old.
Oh, okay, that sounds like a pretty good.
Right, yeah, yeah. They're actually really similar, so these electric car batteries. Forklit batteries, just different voltage.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Any other? Entertained a motion?
Yeah, I just want to know what this budgeted for?
It was in the line item. We always budget, because you never know when they're gonna die.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I didn't see.
That's okay.
Just yell at me.
We're in visual. Motion, I move to approve the purchase of four batteries from Battery Giant for a total amount of $10,435.04.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the purchase of the four batteries for Battery Giant. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pollak?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sued?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. So move. Moving on to item number five. This is something I will accuse myself from. Still sit in the audience and I'll turn this over to Mayor Protem. Thank you.
Is Mr. Estes going to take this one, or Mr. Pocken?
Okay, this is a proposed settlement agreement to agree upon and release parties in reference to what we have to know as the Budge Matter. This is a lawsuit that was filed some number of years ago with respect to a law and who owns it. The Superior Court, after hearing the case, ruled that the law belongs to the city. In the meantime, there were several attempts to reach a settlement. Most recently, last month, we entered into settlement, selling negotiations again with your approval, and came up with an agreement that we discussed at the last council meeting during the executive session. The settlement agreement that is before you this evening mirrors the discussion that you all had at the executive session at the last council meeting, with the exception that there may have been a few eyes dotted and t's crossed a little bit differently, but all of the substance is exactly as you reviewed it at the last council meeting. So, staff is prepared to recommend that council approve the proposed settlement agreement.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve a settlement agreement, will we sound the Budge there?
Second. We have a motion by Ms. Giacamino, second by Ms. Johns.
Councilmember Pollak?
Nay.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sued?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor?
Motion passes, second.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number six. This is discussion of possible approval to accept the resignation of Matthew Gurney to the airport property as the airport property manager. Mr. Arnold?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Mr. Matthew Gurney has submitted his resignation as the airport property manager. During his time there, he's done an exceptional job of maintaining the property. He's also done a lot of work on upgrading the lighting, which you guys will hear later on during this meeting. But he did meet his requirements for the 30-day notice. He did submit that to myself and Mr. Pocken. Again, I want to thank Mr. Matthew Gurney for his service as airport property manager.
Alright, any questions or comments? You think that's an easy job, but it's not. It doesn't run the grass as fast as it does around here. So, appreciate what he's done. I move to accept the resignation of Matthew Gurney as airport property manager.
A second.
Motion by myself, second by Johnny, to accept the resignation. All who was in favor signify by saying aye.
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 No, nay, nope, very none. Motion passes. So move. Quickly moving on to item number seven. This will be discussion of possible approval of agreement for airport operation manager and maintenance services.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With the resignation of Mr. Matthew Gurney, I would propose that we, actually, the mayor and council, assign Mr. Robin, I'm sorry, Mr. Robin Roberts as the airport property manager. There's, the agreement there does say airport property manager. Previously, when we assigned, or the council assigned, Mr. Matthew Gurney as the airport property manager, it was operations manager. Council decided to change the title of that, so the agreement portion of that is correct. Airport property manager and maintenance services. Mr. Robin Roberts has served in the parks department for just over two years. He's done an exceptional job in the parks department, and recently, he's shown his exceptional mechanical skills in the parks department. Recently repaired our John Deere lawnmower, riding lawnmower, and I feel very confident that he can do the job. He is here, so if you all have any questions of him or myself, I would be happy to entertain those. Mr. Robin Roberts?
May he counsel, Mayor?
Aye. Any questions, comments?
Why do you want the job, Rob?
It just seems like an interesting position and it would be a good mark on the resume, the property manager.
Do you know what that entails? I mean, you have had experience with you?
Groundskeeping, yes, I've had experience with that. And Matthew Gurney walked me through the process of that.
Would you help us?
Absolutely.
Are you related to him?
Yeah, I'm her youngest son.
Hi, that's you.
He's a nice guy, too, I know.
I try.
Anyone else? Entertained a motion?
I move to approve the agreement for airport operations manager and maintenance services with Robin Roberts. A second.
Motion by Anna, second by Johnny, to approve the agreement for operation, airport operation manager and maintenance services with Robin Roberts. We'll call for roll call on the project.
Councilmember Pollak?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sued?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Paul.
So move. Get used to the airport noise. Oh, that's right, we don't have jets out there. Alright, thank you. Moving on to eight. The airport, so. Discussion of possible approval to purchase solar-powered runway lights for the Bisbee Municipal Airport.
Thank you, again. So, as you all may know, or may not know, the electrical system over at the airport has failed. And the portion that fails is an electrical regulator. That regulator is quite costly to repair. In fact, it's nearly identical to replace. We did, within this fiscal year, 2021-22 budget, budget for a replacement regulator, so that we can replace that. In the meantime, we have been doing a lot of research and we came across solar-powered LED, LED lights for the runway. They do meet the FAA requirements, and they are quite a lot less expensive than what we had budgeted. We had budgeted $25,000. We have received a proposal for the cost of $6,565.40 from Bright Portal Resources, based out of Waco, Texas, I believe. And those do come with the adhesive pads. We, as the public works department, can install those, so we declined that installation. So, that is the total price for runway lights and end of runway lights. With that, do you have any other questions? Or do you have to take them?
I have two questions.
Yes.
One, how long are they projected to last? Like, what's the lifetime?
That, I don't know. I can look for you and get back to you. But with the cost savings on those, is significant?
Well, my second question is, since they are so cheap, is there a way, or are you planning on taking the money that's not spent, that was put for the bigger cost and put it off to the side for future failure, I hate to say that, or future these dying?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely, we do that. There are some additional items that we do need to replace. We do need to replace the actual signs that are out there. And again, we are looking to go solar powered with those. Those ones, we're still doing some research on those, but we find that the runway lights at this point are probably the priority. And so, we move forward with this.
I have one more question.
Absolutely.
Didn't we have grant money before for the airport, or did we get some kind of money?
Yes.
Is that possibly what we're using also on this?
Yes, we do, yes, we do plan on, yes. We do, we did receive, I think it's called Airport American Recovery Grant. Yes, we can use that funding for this.
Mayor? Yes?
Thank you. Just to further explain, the technology on these lights is extremely simple. It is not wholly different than the yard lights that you buy and you stick along your sidewalk in front of your house. Except, of course, that they're a lot brighter. And also, they do have replaceable battery packs. So, the lights themselves aren't necessarily gone when the battery goes. The battery cells can be replaced.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
Since you decided to install them yourself, would that create a problem with the warranty? If there's any, no?
No, these are installed with an adhesive pad. Essentially, what you do is, it's double-sided sticky adhesive pad. You put it down on the ground and then you put that on there. It's extremely sticky tar, essentially. So, the installation has nothing to do with the warranty.
I just want to make sure, Mr. Robbins knows we don't blow over.
That's the good part, is these runway lights aren't installed in the grass, on the asphalt, so they don't get run over. I'm just kidding. Oh, there's a light!
It's just a question of the subject. How many airplanes are we receiving a year? How much does the airport clean utilize? What's the utilization percentage going a year and the cost versus what?
So, we do have those numbers. I don't have them with me right now, but we can get you some numbers.
Yeah, you know, if you could get me those numbers, please.
Absolutely, I appreciate it. Absolutely.
Stay with the lights. Any other comments? Okay, entertained a motion?
I move to approve purchase of solar-powered runway lights for the Bisbee Municipal Airport from Bright Portal Resources, LLC.
Second.
We have a motion by Frank, second by Anna, to approve the solar-powered lights for Municipal Airport. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pollak?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sued?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. So move. One more. This is number nine. This is discussion of possible approval to enter into a service agreement for generator maintenance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, it's been my, it's my understanding that, oh, first off, the city of Bisbee currently has five large generators. They power the police station, the pump house. So, that pump house is the, where we pump our water from the ground in Old Bisbee up to the reservoir for fire suppression. The Mule Gulch lift station, and the Tin Town lift station, and also the San Jose wastewater treatment plant. So, we have this total of five large generators that we have. We have, those generators are not on a maintenance contract. They typically require a bi-annual maintenance on those. Since I've been here, they have not been maintained in such a way. And it's my understanding it's been some time. And so, those are things that absolutely need to be maintained, especially when we're looking at things like the police station, the lift stations, and the San Jose wastewater treatment plant. So, it's my proposal that we go to a contract for that maintenance. I have worked with Gentech in my previous career. They do an excellent job. They are on a cooperative contract. One thing I do need to mention, though, is that the San Jose wastewater treatment plant, that generator is not included in this proposal. That is because the Jacobson contract is, they entered that contract, they are responsible for maintaining that one. And they do so. So, we do, I do find it very important that we keep those generators maintained. Think, you know, we have not had any problems with them up to this point, but the last thing we'll want to do is need them and not have them working. So, I do propose that we enter into a maintenance contract with Gentech.
This will be for four?
Absolutely. It is for four generators for one year. It includes the annual maintenance and a bi-annual maintenance. So, two maintenances on each generator for one year.
And they do give run, they have automatic?
They automatically turn on, yes.
Yeah.
How much is that gonna be?
How much is it? The contract for one year for all four, $7,528.87.
Go ahead.
I mean, you said you've never had this before. Why now? Why, and what's the decision behind this, since we have not had this? What made you thinking that we need it now versus we didn't have it years prior?
Sure, absolutely. It's always been my, it's always been, in my opinion, that these need to have the regular maintenance. Luckily, luckily, we haven't had any problems with them. And I know that Chief Chave has some input on that also. But right now, it's because they need the maintenance. We need them, and they need to be working when we need them. I'll let Chief Chave speak.
So, we've had a generator at the police station all of my career, and I believe it's the same one. It's going on about 20 years old. With regular maintenance, those generators can last a long time. Unfortunately, just in my time, and Jesus and I have had a few conversations about this, we've had failures of our generator. Not catastrophic failures where it's, you know, we've had to replace it. But because there was a little bit of low water in the reservoir, it wasn't, we don't have it on a rotating contract, we checked. When we needed it, it didn't start. We had battery issue, when we needed it, it didn't start. We're up there trying to jumpstart it with a jumper box, trying to get it going, get power back to the police station. So, there's definitely a need for it. Jesus has been working on this for some time, trying to get this, get this up and running. In the old days, we had three city mechanics, and one of the mechanics was always going and checking generators. We don't have that staff anymore. And for the price for all these generators, I think it's definitely a small piece to pay for to make sure that it's gonna work when we need it.
Yes, oh, sorry. Leslie?
No, so, I totally, totally understand we need the maintenance and stuff. And what Albert was saying, I get that, we don't have anyone on staff, but we can just put on schedule to do this. That's, so it would be less expensive to get into this contract than to hire another employee at best. Okay.
Okay, Johnny?
So, I guess my question is, Ms. Doobin Loon here, we don't have it. What happens and how much would it cost to replace one of those generators?
Ooh. Ooh. Yeah, I'd say lots. I don't know, I don't have a number on that.
Probably about 10 or 12, 20, 20, 20. Probably over about ten or twelve, twenty, twelve hundred and ten to fifteen.
I'm guessing double that.
Double, I'm expecting.
Yes.
So then there, yeah, I mean, obviously there is a substantial need to maintain.
Absolutely, it's important, and, and, and if I could just, uh, make a note, I know that we were talking about having a, one of, if we had the available staff mechanic to go by there. Um, the servant, and I've, I've, I've gone through the checklist on this, the checklist on these are upwards of forty or fifty different things that they have to check. And each one of these generator, um, technicians are certified in their generator. Each generator has, each manufacturer has its own certification for them, so while we could have a mechanic go and, and do that, they wouldn't be spec, specifically certified in those types of generators, that manufacturers of them. They could do that, and that's not to say that they can't, it's just the certification that those technicians have.
Anything else, Johnny?
That was all.
Oh, did you grab?
Oh, 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 if you don't mind.
Hey, go ahead.
Just one last question, so, so it's something that you have been working on, or why?
Absolutely, yes, I've been talking with Chief Chavik for a while, and we, we've been working on this, um, and it's through my, my career experience that I, I fell back to Gentech because I knew that they were on a cooperative contract. I have worked with them in the past, um, and so they do meet our procurement processes, and I feel confident in, in their work.
Can you define, also-
Go ahead.
Can you define cooperative contract?
Their contract, their contract says that, with a contract with, I believe they, they gave us the city of Peoria. It says that other municipalities can, can use that contract, um, without having to go out to, to bid, and that's something that the city council, uh, would have to agree to when we say cooperative, you can say we would prefer to go out to bid, but we wouldn't have to because it's already cooperative, uh, competitively bid, excuse me.
One more thing, and I'm gonna give it to City Manager. I have some things to do with this one on the fire department, because we all have them where I work. And one thing people don't quite realize is, when I watch them service these, one thing they have to check is the fuel. Because as the fuel sits for year after year after year, it can get water in it, it starts to lose its, and so they, they literally take a sample and take it down to the lab and, so it seems, it's a little more than giving your oil change that, and then, so, yeah, this is, and it's, these things are so expensive and you want to keep them running just like the car. Okay, City Manager.
I just wanted to also let you know that in the course of our discussion on this, um, the, the COVID list, the, the, list that you guys are all considering, uh, for the American Rescue Plan, that does contain proposals for several new generators. Uh, those will not be to replace existing generators. You mentioned being in the fire service, we've got two fire stations and zero generators. Uh, I believe those are places we should have them. And then, uh, when City Hall gets rebuilt, we should have a generator at that facility as well. So, we've got a potential for an additional three generators online for the next few years, so, um, that will create more demand for that type of service.
We use fire stations, City Hall as an emergency place if you have a disaster to come, and we need any power to, to, to heat and cool and take care of the, uh, place, so that's a good reason to have it. Anything else? Seeing none. Quickly, I'll just, uh, make a motion to, I move to enter into a service agreement with Gentech higher generation specialist in the amount of seven thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Second.
I have a motion by myself, second by Louie, for the service agreement. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pollak?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sued?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimous, Lee, so moved. All right, item number ten, is the same matter we record.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the first two items on the city managers' report tonight will be given to you by Mr. Harlow. This better be good.
You better hurry.
Try it.
There's no generator here.
Thank you, Mr. Pocken, and since we have a nice bolt of electricity here, we're talking about electric vehicle charging stations. Um, so, I, the portion that the, um, the realignment of Claussen and Tombstone Canyon, uh, that responsibility so that we can make space and, and make sure that there are space, there's space available for the charging stations has been completed by the public works department. I did meet with APS last week, and, um, we went over their initial conceptual, um, design, and their initial conceptual design will not work because they were intending to come off a, a, um, the, the pole just to the northwest of Thewes and come off that pole with power and then, um, trench over to the parking, uh, spaces that are intended to be, uh, electric charging. The problem with that is the drainage, vehicles drainage channel is directly underneath that, so they can't trench there. So they are changing, they're going to, to Plan B, and that pole that they plan on coming off now is over, uh, by the, uh, by Claussen and, and the intersection of Claussen and, and, uh, Tombstone Canyon. We hope to hear from them next week, uh, in, in seeing some sort of conceptual design for that, but is, is, as I mentioned, our responsibility for making those spaces available, making enough space so that they can put those charging stations is complete. We're now waiting on APS's, um, design. Um, the next thing we have is an update for the, uh, the catch, drainage catch basin, excuse me, drainage catch basin on Main Street. Currently, what we are doing is we have to, we have to do a custom design on the grate because the, that portion of the road is crowned. Um, we were doing, we would be doing something, the ultimate would be something similar to what's down, uh, up, right there by the library. The difference being that the road, Main Street, right in front of the library where that catch basin is, transitions to a flat road. And so that's why we have to, we have to go to a custom design. I am in, uh, conversations with a manufacturer locally, uh, in Sierra Vista locally, but, um, that they, they will be able to help us out. But that's, that's where we're at right now, and with the rain that we're getting, actually, right now, it's probably not the wisest idea for us to be trenching across, uh, Tombstone Canyon slash Main Street as soon as we come across to September fifteenth, is where typically when monsoon ends, um, we, we hope to be ready to move forward.
All right, thank you.
And I just have one more item to add, Mr. Mayor, tonight. Mr. Doug Taylor, who has recently been, uh, hired as our new planner, uh, starts work tomorrow. And, uh, Doug comes to us, uh, out of retirement, I know that will surprise you. Nobody ever does that. And, uh, Doug happens to be, um, a retired registered architect, um, and most recently before his retirement, uh, was the community development director for Providence Town, Massachusetts. So, he's no stranger to the multitude of different aspects of dealing with city planning and community development, so, uh, we feel he'll be a tremendous asset to us moving forward. Um, and so tomorrow morning, I'll be sending him out into the field with Joe Ward and, uh, step up as the hacker, uh, because we are just about ready to finish up the second workforce house, uh, that should be finished in a week. And, uh, so we'll be looking for the third and fourth opportunities. So they'll be out looking at a couple of our citywide blocks, uh, with that in mind, so we can keep the process rolling as we move forward, so. Uh, he's gonna get the girl running tomorrow. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. I think you can make this act a little longer, but.
You don't have to leave.
I will take a motion for a German.
I would most quick a motion to a German.
I like that motion.
I want to do a second.
All right, we got a motion by Frank. All right. And a second by hell. Do a German. I've seen part of the same. Hi, hi. Yes, Dave.